This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah, Aaron, I don't know what happened.
I think I closed it out on accident. I think that was my fault, so I hit the record button. I made you the organizer. I should be able to leave.
Yeah, you left and it seemed to happen when Roger left. So was he an organizer too?
No.
No?
No, he doesn't know how to, no.
So, yeah, I don't know what happened. I was just sitting here waiting and they just said the meeting ended.
Yeah, I think I did it, sir. So we've got to back go in. It's recording again. So I made you an organizer. I made Dave Street an organizer, right Dave?
You're gonna go try to go back to exact?
Yes, yes, sir. We're gonna start it again, right Mayor?
Once you started this one, it booted us all out of the other one, even though you made me the organizer.
Okay.
Wow.
I mean, we can try it, but I have a feeling it's gonna end it again.
But it may end it again. Thanks.
So Dave.
Yes, sir.
Can you go in and create an executive session?
Yes.
Oh, he can't do that, can he?
He has to create a new main session link, but nobody else has it. So that's the problem.
Yeah, I could create a new executive session. Oh, no, because we're in the same boat. I can't be in two meetings at the same time neither.
Well, I was thinking Aaron could run this one and you could start the other one, but that's executive session.
Right. So Aaron can't be in.
Mayor, here's the thing. It's about property. You just need your staff person there. You don't need me in the executive session because it's not legal. It's our property. So you can make me, I can stay here and he can send y'all a new exec. He'll set it up. And then Eric just needs to join you to talk about the property.
Okay.
Okay.
That's, what do we do about Dave being in the meeting?
Well, they just.
Just because it's about property, that's okay?
Yeah, he can, yes.
Okay.
And it's not recorded, so he just needs to turn his thing off.
All right. Well, Dave, if you don't mind, create another executive session for us and send us all the link.
Send it to all the council members, to Roger and to Eric Belay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You are welcome. I'm doing it right, Mayor.
Storm has messed up everything. That's what I'm blaming it on.
Works.
All right, well, I'm gonna leave this one and see if I can get to the other one.
We'll see you in a little bit.
You're leaving the good party, Ed. I'm here eating, I'm eating my dinner cereal.
I'm still having coffee, so I don't know how much of a party.
I like living alone. I can eat what I want to when I want to.
I, as a matter of fact, I had.
Yeah.
I'm actually a breakfast person. I could have breakfast food almost any meal of the day. Turkey bacon. It's all good.
Roger? Roger, you're gonna get a new exec session link from Dave Street. Please log into that one.
Okay, thank you.
Aaron, do you have family in Texas? Was all your family and loved ones fine?
Um, I do. I have, my husband's family is all in this area and they're all okay. They, several of them are kind of in the Flugerville area. And so they had a lot harder, lot more hours without power than I did. Sister and her husband and brother and his family are in the Houston area and they did pretty well. My other, the rest of my family's North Dallas area, North Carolina. And then my parents actually live in New Mexico. So we did well. I just got running water. I got running water at my house again yesterday because we live on a well in Septic. And so a wellman finally came yesterday. So I got my first hot shower at the house. I will never take that for granted again.
Yes. I went to my neighbors one time and so in a week and a half, I had two showers. And I got my first shower in my house yesterday. The water, well, not yesterday, Wednesday, Thursday, Tuesday, Tuesday. The water came, got back okay on Tuesday because I'm from the lake and Septic. So, but my saving grace and Paul's truth seekers and people on that street was we never lost our power. And our community here, we all surmised, well, I didn't, but they planted the thought because I didn't think about it. But surmises because even though Paul Roberts is closer to the fire station, he lost, they lost power. And Lake Shore Pointe and me, I'm lonely here. I'm like the only house here. And, but we must be on the fire station grid. That's what, that's what the general analysis was, that we didn't lose our power because we must be on the fire station grid.
It's possible. Usually those folks who are in the, that, on the line with a hospital or something like that. I hadn't heard that fire stations, because I know several fire stations that lost power, but they have emergency backup generators. But maybe you just got lucky. But that's good. You, that's lucky. We, you know, I felt very fortunate.
Yeah, very, very much a blessing.
Yeah, we, I was happy that two on and two off. We would have two hours on and then two hours off. And I thought, you know, that's, if you're gonna be without power, that's not bad versus some.
People who have full pools. If you have pools, that's bad. Because there's, yeah, there's no way, at that kind of a temperature here, I don't think, I mean, thank God I didn't need to experience it. But to be in the single digits for two hours, I know it doesn't take two hours for the water on a tub to freeze in those kind of temperatures. So.
Yeah, that's kind of scary.
It's still gonna be bad, but nature of the situation.
We have a 2,500 gallon storage tank at our house, just to make sure if our well goes down, we can have water delivered. And, because it did, it went down last year sometime. And a lot of, all of the piping coming out of the tank and into the pump, the jet pump, the little booster pump that sends the water to the house. All of that froze. All the pipes broke.
Oh, no.
Luckily.
You didn't have any kind of, is it covered? Is it in a little house or?
A little house. Um, but the little house wasn't insulated because, you know, it's usually not cold and not insulated well enough. So this is the, we got it all replaced yesterday and got a call into a company to come and do spray foam and all. The little house and.
With the solid, that solid foam stuff?
And then to, my husband also has, is having something called heat trace, like a little, it's a little wire that runs along all of the lines that are exposed. And it'll keep them warm enough to that they won't freeze. And then he's having, he's gonna install some heat lamps in our little wellhouse. So you shouldn't have that issue again, but.
Yeah, we all, we all have learned lessons this time, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, I was really thankful that none of the lines, none of, we have, you know, some water lines that come are on exterior walls. And none of those froze, so I was really thankful. But.
I tried to keep the house at like 68 for the most part, so that I couldn't imagine anything freezing on the exterior if all the interior is. And I don't think I did. I have, I have an issue with my master shower, which it actually, the, all the shower apparatuses, things. That's actually the only, the only instance where there is fixtures or pipes on the outside wall there. And this, this whole house, it's really weird. And, but it has to do with some kind of cartridge, an internal cartridge, which I have, it's nothing to do with, you know, anything bad. It's just that this nebulous thing that happened to go bad at the same time. Maybe the cold helped it. I'm not sure, but it's just finding it because there's no model number on anything and, you know, stuff like that. So it's, it's this ubiquitous part. So I got an email. But I, I mean, I'm making progress because I got the number to the main GROA company and they understood the situation. Said, send the email or get it right to our tech and we'll have, we'll be able to figure out what part you need. So hopefully I don't need to go through a plumber plumber situation, you know?
Yeah.
So that's all good. And I found a, I found a heater that I had bought on sale at Harbor Freight. Wandering around those places and finding things. So I found this heater that I had just, in case of emergency, you know, I'm here by myself. So just randomly gotta think of things sometimes that pop up. And so this little heater was on sale at Harbor Freight. And so I got it. And when I was checking water, you know, flushing and right before, I think right before the snow, not before the freeze, but before the big snow on Sunday. And I found it in one of my closets upstairs. I'm like, oh, I can put this down under what I call my water processing area, which is underneath the pool. So it's all closed in and it's covered by the house and it shouldn't freeze, but you never know, you know, every safety measure is gonna help in this situation. So I made a little stack of bricks. So just in case something happened and there was water on the floor, it wouldn't be sitting in water. So I put it on a little stack of bricks, strung the wire across the pipes that go underneath there. So that would be in the water and plugged it in. So, and I turned it on low, so I didn't want it to overheat or something. So just a little tiny bit of heat in there. And so I was able to add that. And, but my neighbor, that heat tape stuff or heat trace, he has that on his. He thought he was really, he was safe with his well and everything. I don't have a well. I wish for a well. I grew up with a well. But, you know, mine is like, but Strewsaker has a well. And he thought he was all set because he has that heat tape going and he only had a short section of pipes going from the well. And he has a stone wall around it. It's not covered, but there's a stone wall around it. So he thought he had, and he did do well. But for whatever reason, some little section of it actually froze. So he, he lost water temporarily. And, but luckily I was able to take them a little bit of my, for, it was just a couple of days before they got it fixed because it was during the freeze freeze. It was after the big snow and the freeze. It was only a couple of days. They had no water. But I was able to take them a few of my, bought my emergency water bottles. So that was cool. So you feel like, okay, I was able to help somebody here. So that was, that was good. It was a feel-good moment. So. Got to drive my pickup in four-wheel drive. Never done that before.
That's awesome.
Just put it in low and crawled because it was like six inches of snow. My gate, my gate, the ice built up so much that it, when it tried to open, it slid off of its track. So it was out of commission for a couple of days, but my wonderful neighbors helped me get that back together again. So it's all a community, which is really good.
Yeah, I'll tell you, several of us, you know, we didn't, I wouldn't say quite camp out, but we were up at the police department in their, one of their conference rooms pretty much all day, every day for days on end, making things happen, getting it, you know, monitoring and getting information out and getting prepared.
I think you guys had a really good job.
Thank you.
Kudos.
I'll tell you, Meredith did the bulk of all of the notifications and that was, you know, I think I got a report. There were like 90 something? No. Let's see. What is it? We had. Let's see, let me see if I can find it. Let's see.
Rebecca.
Well, I gave them all, I gave them all 15 minutes to try and figure out which meeting to go to, so.
Did you find your way? Did everybody find their way?
Arch has made it.
All right. This is what happens. Gotta have, gotta have Dave Street or somebody else to set up the main meeting.
Yeah, I don't understand. I don't know if he stayed on or something, but I don't, Josh set up a meeting one time and made me the co-organizer.
Yeah, it's never kicked me off before. I've done this multiple times. So I don't know what the deal is, but it will. And maybe it's because I'm running it off of my tablet that it won't let me have more than one open, but I've never had that problem before. Because that's typically what I'll do is I'll set up both and I'll make someone else the organizer, leave them behind and come back. But not today. What are you gonna do?
It's all done. It's all fixed.
We do what we did.
Agenda.
So is there, with it going off and losing the recording, is there anything I need to go back and?
Uh, no, not necessarily. We'll have to post two, two, set two recordings with this. And, you know, when Sandra does the official minutes, she'll just use both, you know, recordings for it. But we'll have, we'll have two pieces.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I have a random question. Does anybody, has anybody here done the Lasix vision for their eyes? You may have noticed that I'm wearing my glasses and, which you have Roger. I would like to get, they, you have to have your contacts out for at least two weeks before they'll remeasure to see if you're still good. Years ago I was good, but who knows now. And so since I had to take them out, I thought, okay, this is a good time to go get an evaluation, but I haven't done any research on where to go. So if anybody has any recommendations, if you have positive waves.
Austin Eye. I went to Austin Eye, Jollibeeville. Amazing.
It was good?
Yeah.
Amazing, not good, but amazing.
I never had 2020 even with glasses and immediately after I could see, I was shocked. I thought there would be days to adjust, but it was immediate. Yeah. Now the thing.
Did they do one?
Um, yeah. One, one week and then the next week, yes, the second.
All right, I have all my council meeting members here, so I want to get rolling.
Rolling, rolling, rolling.
All right. We reconvene from executive session into open session at 6:20 PM to act as deemed appropriate in city council's discretion regarding, A, any necessary action regarding any regular meeting agenda item? All right. B, any necessary action regarding the purchase near Bronco Lane to install utility infrastructure? Yes, Council Prince?
Just a, I guess a point of order question. Had we set the expectation that this meeting would restart with public at 6:30? And do we need to adhere to that or can we go ahead and start?
We're still coming out of executive session. We will, we will recess and then go to the general meeting at 6:30.
Okay, thank you.
So any action for B? Yes, Council Sullivan?
Yes, Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve the city manager and the mayor to negotiate a contract for the property near Bronco Lane and execute it as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Who was my second? I didn't, couldn't catch that.
Williams?
Yeah. Okay, so I have the motion by Kevin Sullivan and the second by Council Marion. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries unanimous. Aaron, at this time, would you care to give our citizens a little brief overview of what we discussed? Would you like me to?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, but you knew it. So I told you I was gonna refer to you. Okay, so just those of you, we're extending utility lines near Bronco and so that's what our, it's, we've been discussing real estate needs in that area. So that's as detailed as we will get at this time, but that's what executive session is about. So at this time, we will recess and we will come back at 6:30. Thank you. Thank you. Aaron, we hear you typing.
Sorry. Trying to get more work done, squeezing it in.
All right. We reconvene in from recess into open session at six 30 PM. And Council Prince, I think I. I want to make a little clarification on your point of order. All the other previous meetings, I think we have ran all the way up to the six 30 point of time. We did, we haven't had a time to recess. So, yeah, we were taking action. In the open session on our executive session item. So this one was a little bit different because we actually came out ahead of time. So that's why it seemed a little bit different. Anyway, six 30. So we're going to start, uh. With, we've already taken our roll call, so we're going to start with our pledge of allegiance. We'll do the American and the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. All right. Citizen comments in accordance with the open meetings act, council is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions. Any items not on the agenda? I did not have anybody signed up to speak. So if there's anybody in the audience who would like to make a comment, uh, please raise your hand. All right. We will go into items of community interest. Pursuant to Texas government code section five, five, one dot zero, four, one, five. The city council may report on any of the following items. Expressions of thanks, gratitude and condolences, information regarding holiday schedules. Recognition of individuals, reminders regarding city council events. Reminders regarding community events and health and safety announcements. We've had a busy two weeks. I am not going to go into all of the thanks and recognitions that have. Are deserved over the last two weeks, but I will state that we still have our water. Out here in city hall. It is now a self-service station. Any citizens out there that are still in need of water can come to city hall and pick them up as needed. If we identify anybody that cannot get to city hall, we do have services available where we can get them water. Uh, we also have mobile showers with hot water for anybody that needs a shower. And we have, uh, portable restrooms. That is still all ongoing. We have prep work going on our sites. For our brush removal, uh, because of, uh, the amount of brush that we have to remove. We needed a large enough site. Well, TCEQ requires certain permits and accessibility. And so we are working as fast as we can to make the sites accessible so that the citizens can come in and, um. Get rid of their brush. Uh, we realize it's taking longer. It's not taking longer, but the scheduled plan shows a later date than we would like to offer to the citizens. I mean, we'd have liked to have started it, you know. Saturday, but we just can't. We, we, we just can't get that done with the state requirements. So as soon as we get it accessible, we will be opening up the site for our brush removal phase two to start. And the last thing I have is, uh, we have another city council meeting next Thursday. Hey. So Ms. Marion, Counselor Marion.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just another shout out to La Gavista ISD, the lady Vikings, um, basketball team, um, are not only. Area champs, but are also regional quarterfinal champs. So congratulations to the teams, to the team, the players, parents, coaches.
Are they still going?
As I know, yes, sir.
Awesome. Awesome. Yes, Council Weatherly. We can't hear you. Dick, we can't hear you. Nope. No, it shows you green, but for some reason we can't hear you. Counselor Prince.
Uh, Mr. Weatherly, you may have to log back out and come back in. I've encountered that before. I would also like, Mayor, if you could clarify this coming Thursday, I believe, one week from today and the Saturday following would be the normal day for our monthly green center opening. Is that still planned to be, uh, open on those days?
You know, uh, normally I would say yes, but I'm going to have to check on that. Uh, because if we're doing this, the larger centers, you know, my staff are going to be occupied there. So thanks for bringing that. Up. Yes. Well, I need to clarify that.
It may be good to have a, a, a public announcement, uh, clarifying that soon.
Right. Um, yeah, we'll definitely have to clarify that because our green center is nowhere near prepared or capable of handling. The amount of brush that's out there and I don't want to necessarily open that and then. Everybody overwhelm it. Um, so yes, I will. I will work on that immediately and we'll get something addressed. Thank you. Yes, Counselor Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to update folks, um, back on, uh, February 20th, we, the Lions were going to have a blood drive in the aftermath of the storm. Uh, it was canceled. Uh, so we were not able to have it. Um, we were in discussion with, we are blood folks to figure out what to do. Um, ultimately the decision was is that we will not end up having one until the normally scheduled time in April. So I just wanted to give everybody an update on that as it gets closer. Um, we'll certainly be putting out information so that people will know about that. And then, um, the other item I wanted to mention was that, um, while working in the, the water dispersal line this week, uh, some people I saw coming through and they were just going to the library. We just waved them on through, but I just wanted to make the, uh, the note to folks that the library is still open in these times of COVID. They do have some adjusted, uh, times, uh, and, and requirements of mask wearing and things like that, but I did want people to know that. Jan and the staff over there are trying to keep, uh, operations as normal as possible. And if you need those services from the library, it's open and you should be able to access it. You can go to the website to, um, reserve items and they'll notify you when they're ready to pick up. And I thank you so much, Mayor.
Yes, sir. All right. Counsel Weatherly, let's try again. Nope. Still no good. I don't know. Do you have a, do you have a, you have a separate microphone that you use? No, no.
You have headphones plugged in by chance at all?
Okay. So, um. Something that, I don't know. If you want to type it, type me a message. I can get back to it. If you want to put something in chat, I'll get to it. Okay. Well, with, when, uh, Counselor Sullivan was speaking, he did remind me of something. The Lions Club. With, uh, Anna Gendrow and Don Gendrow, they are working on a GoFundMe. Uh, account. Uh, I know. Roger, myself and Don all shot a video to go along with it. This GoFundMe account is a local. Uh, program to bring in funds to help our citizens who cannot or how are having difficulty paying for plumbing repairs. Or having difficulty with, uh, paying for brush removal and anything along those lines. I haven't received anything from Anna just yet, but hopefully. Uh, that will go live tonight, tomorrow, uh, very soon. So. Yes, Counselor Sullivan, you have an update on that?
Yeah, I, I'm working with them on that. I'm doing the technical side of getting the, uh, page set up and, uh, they're working on the content. Um, she's still editing the footage that she shot with you and Mr. Chan, um, and, and her husband. Uh, she's going to get that to me and we, I think we probably will be up in the next day or so.
And I, um, I already got an email from a corporate. Business here that's looking. Looking for a place to make a donation. So we got people lined up. Already. So soon as, as soon as that gets out, we'll be able to help financially with some of our citizens.
I'm sorry for interrupting you. I just want to say that once it is up, we'll absolutely plaster it on social media. So people get a chance to know that's where it is and how to get to it and how to donate.
Awesome. All right. Anybody else? Anybody from the audience have? An item of community interest? Okay. We will go on to. Action item. Discussion, consideration and possible action regarding resolution twenty one dash eighteen seventy seven. Approving a city of La Gavista Trail Master Plan and Designating the City as applicant. Designating certain officials as being responsible for, acting for, and on behalf of the applicant for the purpose of participating in grant programs. Assuring the availability of matching grant fund and in-kind contributions. Okay. So this resolution will create an official rail master plan. Although the master plan is in its infancy, the city needs the plan adopted in order to apply for trail grants with state and federal agencies. This resolution will also authorize the city manager to start the application process or processes. For grant funding opportunities to develop the city's trail master plan. There is one opportunity already out there. It's got a closed deadline and this is the alternative transportation route. Federal grant that is administered by Techs Dot. Uh, however, this initial grant application. This initial grant application will be for a 70% grant funding in year 2023. So we have to apply now. But it, you know, for this grant, and if we get approved, uh, the funding still does not get distributed in twenty, till 2023. So we're, you know, we're having to get, apply for it two years in advance. Uh, city staff is recommending applying for two other similar grants. One from, one from middle school, from the middle school to our new city park. Estimated at just over a million dollars and the other from Sierra Trail to Barquet Park. Uh, estimated at approximately 700,000. Once applied for these project, once applied for these projects will be added to the CIP for council approval in September. Uh, other potential grants considering, the city is considering our Texas Parks and Wildlife Department Trails Grants and County. Uh, Community Development Block Grant Participation. So real quick, Eric, I'm going to bring you on to add to this, but I have one question. The two similar grants estimated over one million and 700,000. However, I didn't see an estimate for this one here.
Uh, Mayor, my apologies. There's, it looks like there's a misunderstanding. There's only two projects that the city is applying for immediately, meaning, uh, next week. Uh, one of them is the trail from the middle school to the park. The other one is the, uh, one, the other one that you mentioned. Along Barquet Ranch down to the Barquet Park.
Okay. Oh, okay. So I missed, I misunderstood the writing there. So instead of two other, I added the word other. So instead of two. Similar grants. These, the two we're seeking now are similar to each other. So I'm sorry. That was my, my, my reading between the lines. Thank you. So anything else you would like to add to, uh? What I said, what I, what I wrote, read?
No, Mayor, you summed it up pretty, uh, pretty much, uh. Pretty much everything was, uh, in there, all inclusive. Unfortunately, this is simply to check off a few boxes of, uh. Of the application and the way this, uh, application works is they have a preliminary screening of the application. And then there's a second phase on the application that comes in about six months from now. And they basically screen off a considerable amount of the applicants. So that they can have a smaller second phase process to move forward with those applications. So this is for the very first initial application.
Okay. So. So looking at the map on page fourteen, this is for the. Purple one? Is that correct? Or the pinkish magenta looking one? Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor. So the first one is the pinkish magenta looking one along fourteen thirty one. The other one is a violet looking line that goes down to the Barquet Park.
All right.
What's in green, what you see there in green, those are trails that have already been constructed.
Right. Now what it meant looking at the map and seeing all those future trails on there, it is, uh, very exciting. I hope to actually get to hike them all at some point. All right. So counsel. Questions, comments for. Mr. Belay. Yes, Counsel Prince.
Well, certainly, you know, what, what, what are we signing up for tonight? I guess is the scope, the spirit of my questions. So, you know, we're saying we're approving this master plan, but we're not approving any. My understanding is, I want to clarify, we're not approving any specific spending. And we'll revisit that later after we know the results of this potential grant. That's first part of the question. Second part of the question is, you know, if we apply for these grants, which are 70% and we receive them, then any, any overages, you know, if instead of being, you know, 1 plus 0.7 million or 1.7 million here, if it ends up being 3 million, I assume that it's going to be at the city's expense. So do we have an opportunity to sort of refine the estimates, if you will, as we go through the grant process so that the 70% is on a high confidence number rather than a early estimate?
Mayor and council, to answer that question, the will probably be yes and no. There will be an opportunity during the second phase, but that is to fine tune it, not to go from 1.7 to 3 million. It will be very, it is fine tuning. So for tonight, you're approving a master plan. You're authorizing the city manager to proceed with, with the application and also confirming that the city will be able to offer in-kind contribution and matching cash and in-kind contribution to this grant in the future. If the project does get awarded to the city, and very likely it will only be one project, it is highly unlikely that both of them will be awarded. If one of these projects do get awarded, the city is not obligated to accept the grant, although it would be not advisable to do so.
Okay, yeah, because that's, that is kind of a question. Because, you know, if something happens and we are not in a position to be able to match it with the other 30% or in-kind donations, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to force the city into a position where we, you know, we have to make something. I do understand it's not advisable because if we turn down a grant, you know, the chances of them reconsidering us in the future may not be as well, but, you know. I really don't want to get started into something that's just going to, you know, snowball into millions, millions of dollars because we started with one grant, you know.
Mayor and council, you will have two more opportunities to turn this down. So the second opportunity is going to be at the second phase of the grant application. The third opportunity, I'm sorry, the first opportunity to turn it down will be at the second grant application. And the second opportunity will be when the grant gets awarded and there will be a contract, a grant agreement contract that will come to the city in 2023 if this project gets awarded.
So question along those lines. Can we, is it, if we get to a position, we see that it's, it's not necessarily feasible. Can we withdraw the application? Was that, is that easier than, say, getting it approved and then declining it? I mean, at what point? How, how long do we have to, before we can?
I believe, I believe to be able to withdraw that to be our resolution, Mayor.
All right, Counsel Marion.
Thank you, Mayor. To, to kind of piggyback on both things that you and Paul or Counselor Prince have alluded to, I wonder if the timing here is potentially of concern. We just finished coming out of, and actually we're still dealing with repercussions from a weather-related emergency. And I'm, I feel like in that, the process of dealing with that, we have identified some areas where we as a city might want to look to, I guess, ramp up our emergency preparedness. And I get it that the, the trail master plan is, you know, goes to quality of life and all of that. I certainly, certainly respect that. But I just wonder if we have greater needs in the community right now and should be thinking about funneling, perhaps funneling city resources toward, you know, making sure that our pipes, you know, are, are being replaced at a, perhaps a faster rate than we may have initially planned, making sure the water treatment plants are adequately repaired. And we have emergency generators in place, et cetera, et cetera, before we get into the position of perhaps finding ourselves in a situation where the city might have to pony up anywhere between 210,000 and 600,000 if by some chance we happen to get both of these grants. So I just wonder if it might be better to focus priorities on things that the city might need a bit more at this point in time than, than perhaps this juncture.
Was that a, was that a question or just a?
No, just kind of a statement of a concern that I, that I, basically, I'm just saying that I, I'm not sure this is the right time. I think we have other things that are more pressing where we need to funnel city resources.
All right, so Eric, with the funds being not available till 2023, would we be required, we wouldn't, at what point would we be required to match?
Mayor, council, very good question, very good comments by Councilmember Marion. I am very grateful. I don't have to make that decision. That's why you guys make the big bucks. But regarding the funding, actually, council does not have to set the funding aside until the grant contract is presented before council. So that is 2023 and the next grant opportunity unfortunately will be 2023 also.
Okay. All right, so this would be two years down the road before it would be in our CIP plan. Okay. All right, Counsel Weatherly.
Yeah, the thing with all of these grants is that you've got to plan well ahead for them. You don't get these in a short-term type deal. Anything that we're going to do in upgrading our infrastructure, or things that are going to happen in the next year to year and a half. What we need to look at right now is allocating the funds that we have available to us to make these repairs now. That or put them into CIP and look at them down the road. This doesn't obligate us to anything. This simply is a process to start making these funds available to us if we need them and if we can use them. And the only thing that this obligates us to is saying that yes, we think we will be able to meet these funds. We will be able to be part of this and that we will be available to support this down the road. And if it doesn't come up until 2022, we're probably not looking at funding for it until 2023 because you'll have to bid it out. There'll have to be all the contracts. If you look at the last grant that we got along these lines, after we were approved for the grant, it took over, I don't know, six, eight months before we ever even got to the thing where we really knew what the, the funding and money was going to be. And it was a year before any of that started coming into us and we really started doing any projects with it. So we're way down the road on where this money is going to come into the city. But if we don't start applying for it now, we're looking at being 2025, 2026, before we really get anything started. So to my mind, we need to go ahead and approve this to start getting things moving so that this funding can be available to us when we want it. That's it.
Thank you. Counsel Dovell.
Mayor, I was just trying to follow through all the details that we're talking about here. And my understanding is that we're just really committing to becoming an applicant at this point. I think we're way ahead of the, of the game here in trying to ascertain what the, the matching is going to be. I mean, it, just as easily as money, it could be in-kind matching, which may be land or something of that nature, which would not obligate us to have any money put aside for that. We just don't know at this point what is going to be expected of us until the, the award is made for one of these, these two grants. So I think we're, we're just, there's no point in talking about allocating money, setting aside money and stuff like that because we don't really even know at this point if it's going to be a case of money. That's my point. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, that is a point, matching grant fund of in-kind. And depending on how it's looked at, because we've got to dedicate all this property that these trails are going to run through. So the actual property may be sufficient to cover the in-kind donations on our behalf. And it would be no money, but it's one of those, it is one of those things, you know, we do have, we have identified some needs that we need to take care of now. But, so we don't want to commit ourselves to anything financially. But we also don't want to miss out on an opportunity that may delay us, you know, four years. So, yes, Counsel Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind everybody that the first grant that we received for the Sunset Park, we received the five, half a million dollars was because we put up land for our, our half, our matching half. So we got that half a million dollars and didn't have to put up any cash. So anyway, I, I would agree with a lot of the comments from you and Mr. Dovell and Mr. Weatherly that I think we do need to be planning ahead. We may not have any cash on hand and if we do, it's years down the road. So anyway, thank you.
Yeah. And you know, I know as, as Mr. Belay says, you know, if we turn it down, you know, that, that could not bode well on us. But I don't know, things change, you know? If something happens two years from now and we have to turn it down, we have to turn it down. Cross that bridge when we got to it, you know? So I'd rather be ahead of the game and, and again, cross that bridge of turning it down when we get to it. Counsel Prince?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I want to be clear, I'm, I'm very much in favor of this. I also think this is great. I, I just want to understand what we're getting into. And, and as everyone has clearly stated, what we're getting into is just an application at this point. But I think it would be helpful to me and maybe citizens to understand in this master plan, as it's shown here, how much, in order to achieve this over the next two years or 10 years, whatever it takes, how much land would we have to acquire versus land that we already have and right away that we already have? So, you know, is this master plan relatively easily achievable with land the city already has right away? For, or would we have to buy a bunch of land in order to make it come to fruition?
So I'll let Eric answer that. As far as I know, I know the magenta one. I'm pretty, I'm pretty confident that the magenta one is, we, it's already city right away. The, the lower one around Barquet. I'm not real sure, but I'll let Eric address that one.
Yes, Mayor, that's a very good observation. All of these trails were laid out such that the majority of them were either on city property or on developer property. The, the trail that goes along 1431, the city owns about a 30-foot strip adjacent to the Texas DOT. Right away, surprisingly enough, we own that 30-foot strip on both sides of 1431. So should, should we at some point decide to put another trail on the other side of 1431? So that is very plausible. There may be at some point, some of these other locations to where the city may acquire some grading easements into private property. But as far as acquiring straight out property, they're laid out such that that would not be needed.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, if that's all the questions from council members, I will allow the audience to make some comments. And I saw Diane hand go up, and that's Diane Jean-Jo Penn, not Diane Schofield.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just go back a second to what you brought up at the beginning. And it's not, not to these two that were pending. I'm totally in favor of those. I think that's a great opportunity and I agree with crossing the bridge when we, when we get there in terms of whether we get the grants or not. But I also was, was, had some confusion that you expressed with regard to other potential grants the city is considering. And to me, that also looked like there was, there was two other potential grants down the road as, that we, that could be coming back. And I just want to make sure I understood the scenario here, that it is a number three was from TPWD Trail Grant and a county CDBG, which I don't know what CDBG is. Or if it's one, one other potential grant that is jointly governed or participatory between TPWD and the county CDBG participation.
Okay, so.
Sounds like there's another, a grant down the road, either one or two additional or other grants.
Right, so the ones we're looking at now are administered by Texas DOT, okay? In the, in the future, we're, we, we could be considering grants from Texas Parks and Wildlife. That's the TBWD. And then the county, the CDBG, that's Community Development Block Grants, CDBG. Now, in addition to county, PEC has development block grants and LCRA has development block grants. And there may be others that we can look into. So you know, when it comes to green space and parks and things like that, there are several different organizations, businesses, groups out there that offer development block grants. So we would always be looking into all of those. Yes. Counsel Marion.
Got it. Thank you, Mayor. I have another question. So Mr. Belay mentioned that he thinks it's highly unlikely that we would be awarded both grants. Yet the trail master plan includes both trails that these grants are, for lack of a better word, linked to. Does that mean then, that if we only get one or the other or neither, that we've approved this trail master plan? Does that mean then that later, Mr. Belay or somebody else would be coming back to the city for the potential of funding both of these trails completely from city funds?
It is highly possible, yeah. But that doesn't mean we have to approve it. You know, what are the, what are the odds that, you know, we're going to have that kind of money to just do it on our own? You know, that would be, that'd be a lot of money. That would be an extreme consideration for city, you know, city council to, to weigh, especially with all the other things we've got with our streets and infrastructure and, you know.
And at that point, we would abandon then the trail master plan, at least for the foreseeable future and bring, maybe consider it again later? Just trying to get a sense for what this locks us into.
Yeah, I wouldn't abandon it. You know, I wouldn't abandon the plan, but it, it just puts it on hold. You know?
Right, that's what I meant. Sorry, that, that choice of words.
And then who knows, maybe in the future, we're in a, in a position, we can do a public-private partnership or something else down those lines. So there could, there could be opportunities. But yes, if we don't get grant money and we do want to build it out, then we would be looking at funding it on our own, so. Yes. All right, anybody else? Comments? All right, if that is it, it is open for further discussion or action by council. Yes, Counsel Weatherly.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion?
Wait, I'm sorry. Did we get, did we get public comments, full public comments?
Yes.
I had counselors speak, but.
Yes, Diane Jean-Jo Penn spoke and I opened it up for others and I didn't get any others, so I went back.
Sorry, thank you.
Do you have any comments you would like to? Do you have any comments you would like to add?
I mean, you know, if we did the Trail Master Plan, Mr. Mayor, one of the other options is if. We have several developers looking to develop property within the city and if they are unable to do. To donate property. As part of their required parkland dedication, they can pay a fee in lieu of that. And that fee could be money that would go towards this trail system. So there's, there are other options for getting the funding. Whether it's public-private partnership or fees paid in lieu of parkland dedication. So we have options. Grant, free grant money is always the best.
Yes. Alright. Yes, Counsel Weatherly.
Are we now ready for a motion?
We are ready for action.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-one dash eighteen seventy-seven.
Alright. Counsel Prince got in on the second. So we have the motion and the second. Any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Your resolution passage unanimous. And we go to. Discussion, consideration and possible action regarding water use, winter averaging. Let's see. Let's go over here. Open that up. If you look at the executive summary. There is nothing to summarize. This is for us to. Discuss fully. I mean, as we know. February is a disaster. I mean, that's, you know, it's an understatement and broken water pipes, dripping faucets. Who knows, who knows? My. Thought right off the bat is. Winter averaging is too much. You know, uh. We got something. Did I forge all the email? Did y'all get the email? I'm sorry. From Nalissa's recommendations, did everybody, did all the council see that? Okay, so the the woman who actually did, you know, the the. Plan.
Mayor, you're coming in.
I'm sorry. Are you able to hear me okay?
I hear you fine.
Oh, okay. So, Nalissa. She had put out a, she sent us an email the other day with her.
You're intermittent.
Okay.
Well, stick over here.
Alright, well, let's see. Am I intermittent to everybody or is it just with Sullivan?
You're good to me.
I think it must be on your end, Counsel Sullivan. Alright, so again. Well, shoot, if y'all didn't see it. Anyway, she she sent out an email with just some thoughts on her end. You know, but. It was pretty much along the same lines that. You know. February is kind of a. A disaster and it's going to be really difficult for us to. For anybody really to consider any kind of. Averaging using February in that. Formula, so I will get that to you if I can find it. Real quick, but. That's basically, it was basically along those lines of. You know. As we're all thinking, I'm sure. Yes, Counsel Marion.
A quick question, Mayor, and this might sound a little outlandish, but. I wonder if we might be able to consider, though. I'll acknowledge right off the bat that may not be the easier option for the city perhaps, but but could be a. Better option for citizens. I wonder. If there's some way to determine. Whether. January or February is the better option for citizens, because not all citizens would necessarily have been impacted in February, negatively impacted in February, so. I think you're proposing just November and January, right? Or are you proposing November, January, January? Okay, so. Okay, then I guess if we're not even considering doubling like January, maybe that's not an option. I just thought if we if we didn't get rid of the third month, maybe we could consider taking the better between January or February.
Yeah, no, my my thing would be just to drop.
It may have been a bad idea, but geez, Mayor, that was a little extreme of a reaction.
I don't know what, what, there we go, woo. Don't know what happened, but your sound came back on finally. I was looking here real quick. Sandra. Let's see. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think we just got it from Starlockland.
Okay, so yeah, Tuesday. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, it was only sent to me and Roger, okay. Did y'all say y'all have got it now? Anyway. Yeah, there it is. Alright, I saw some hands up. Arch, did you have your hand up?
Yes, sir. I I'd be interested in knowing what the overall water usage was. For the entire city. The reason why I say that is because if. We had like ten days of no water reuse, other than whatever was broken, which was not monitored. So if we just use the the figures that. Are available to us that monitored or measured the amount of water use. That figure could actually be less than what we anticipate, which would actually have the. The end result of lowering everyone's sewage bill. So we don't really know until we've looked at what the actual water usage was for the entire city. Does that make sense?
Yes. Yeah, I don't know how you, I don't know how you'd apply that to individuals, though.
Well, that might come in though where I was kind of going, like if you could take the lower of January or February.
For individuals?
Right.
Yeah. As a whole, as a whole, you talk in citywide, Chalane, or on an individual, individual account basis?
An individual, well, I don't know what would. I guess it would depend on what could be the better option for citizens overall, right? So. You know, I don't, I don't know if if taking the the city average. Would be better for citizens or if it's better to look at that and on on an individual. Citizen by citizen basis.
So, yeah, here's a. Kind of a, my question, we we don't take, when we're, when we're. Taking this average, we don't necessarily look at the city as a whole. We always look at every individual. Account and I I just don't know if. I I'd have to, we'd have to talk to staff to see if. They have the ability to determine which is better, January, November, January or November, February.
It might be that for me, January is better than February, but it might be that my neighbor, February is better than January, I mean.
Yeah, I just don't know. The software that we have set up to. Figure that out. I don't know if you can break it down like that. I'd have to, we'd have to get with staff to. Ask that question. Yes, Counsel Dovell.
Yeah, I was just gonna add a little bit more to what I was saying earlier. In my particular case, and I think maybe the case of a lot of people. The amount of use of water that I had in February is going to be about half of what is normally there. So if we handle it on an individual basis, it may really be to the advantage of a lot of people and those that are impacted. Negatively, we could handle those individual accounts separately and make some adjustment there. That's what I think might be a better way to go. That's all I have.
Yeah, it's possible. I mean, that's a great idea. I like the idea. I'm just, my only pause is. Man, do we have the capability? On our staff side to accomplish that without. Going through it hand by hand, you know, I I don't. It might be just easier to make a decision. You know. I don't know, well. We don't have to take action on this tonight, we can, but. We don't have to, we can ask for more information, we can wait. Until the readings, the readings will be done. Gosh. Today is Thursday, so the ratings, the readings may be actually done today, I don't know. I don't know what day of the month we're actually. I think we may have done our readings today. Tomorrow being Friday and this twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth being the weekend, so. I don't know if we'll have that information by March fourth or not. But it would be, yeah, it would be good, I guess, to see. How things are turning out once we take the readings. Yes, Counsel Prince.
I, thinking about this, I I figured about what problem are we trying to solve? So the primary problem we're trying to solve is the, I don't know if it's one percent or ten percent of our citizens who had a pipe burst. And used a lot of water, right? So we want to try to to alleviate the pain for those small percentage of our citizens. The majority of citizens. You know, they were expecting a three-month averaging, if they didn't have a pipe burst, as Councilman, Councilman Dovell says, probably ended up using less than usual in February. At the same time, I think we don't want to put a big burden on our city staff to solve some complex, you know, graduate level math problem here, right? So one suggestion that I've thought through and it may be a better suggestion, but we can do something as simple as saying. We'll do the normal app, we'll we'll look at the three-month average for everybody, we'll also just eliminate. February and do a two-month average with December, with, sorry, November and January. And then for every citizen, we say whatever is lower between those two is what you pay this year. So then it becomes highly automated, we don't have to have a city manager intervention, we don't have to do a case-by-case basis. And, you know. It's it's only better. For the people who have the water that that burst and it's what was already expected if the three-month average happens to to be the lower for for people.
Yeah, there you go. That's, that seems, that seems pretty simple. Yes, Counsel Sullivan.
Possessed.
But hey, at least we could hear you.
Yeah.
Counsel Sullivan.
I would echo the comments about not wanting to put a burden on the the staff and I, my question is, I don't believe it would be any a burden for us to wait until next Thursday to make the decision. And I would highly encourage just i- if that is the case, that it's not going to be a problem if we wait till next Thursday. If we could have someone from staff who could tell us what the burden is using these alternative methods. You know, like Mr. Prince's suggestion, i- is it a reasonable thing, you know, for for us to do? I think that'd be great and then we'd have much more information to make our decision on.
Yeah, and I'm I'm trying to remember. It's February, the readings are done. I think this doesn't go into effect until your April. Payment anyway.
I think it's the May bill.
It may be the May bill. I couldn't remember. I knew it was a month or two delay. So I thi- I agree, we have time to. Review it. So.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Alright, here we go, everybody. Counsel Weatherly.
I'll try to make it short and sweet so I don't block anybody else out. I I have no idea what's going on with this computer, I'm going to find out. But my thing would be to just drop February. I think that what we would find on a whole bunch of bills. Is that the water usage during this period is going to drop the numbers. Significantly and reduce over the year. Our income for taking care of our sewage. It would be to me a much better idea to just drop the month of February. November, January were fairly normal months. And we can get a good average of what people are using without doing watering and that kind of thing through those two months. And simply throw November out because. There's going to be advantage to those that use no water at all. And there's going to be a lot of people that didn't bathe or wash. Drink any water, cook any water. Use nothing but bottled water. There's going to be people that have the breaks, they're going to have absorbent bills. That we're going to have to adjust, so that I think the easiest thing for staff. Is simply to use Jan- November and January and just drop February out of the picture.
Yeah.
Now I will click off my mic.
Yeah, that's another, that's another side to consider, so. Yeah, Counsel Sullivan.
Um, I still would put forward, I'd I'd really like us to wait till next Thursday so we can hear from staff. If they already have the infrastructure set up to do averaging for November, January, February and it's work to drop February, I'd like to know that. We don't know that right now.
Yeah, I agree. But yeah, that is a thought, that it was a side to consider, but yeah, I agree, waiting. Yeah, Counsel Dovell, I saw your hand go up.
Yeah, I was just going to echo exactly what. Mr. Sullivan just said, let's just wait.
Yeah. Okay. Cool. Alright, I don't see any hands, so I am going to go to our audience to allow them to make comments. Yes, Ms. DeVoe.
Hello, Mayor Hedwell and city council members. Well, first I I wanted to just let people know that might be watching off camera. That what everybody is talking about is that they use the January or November, January and February to average your bill for sewage. Not everybody knows that here because they could be new and they're all looking at you like, what are these people talking about? So I just want to make that point clear that that's what happens here. And then they take that and that what determines your sewage bill for the next year. Okay, that's clear. Then I had a question. So since so many, because. I actually even seen the people who had all these breaks and these floods and the horrible problems with their plumbing. When will you come up with a. Situation or a solution to help these people that now they have a water bill that is in the thousands? And because I had a leak once a few years back ago. And the plumber said they fixed it. I went on vacation, came back and the plumber didn't fix it, and so for two weeks. I had nothing but water running out my back door. I walked over to the city, they said they could only help me with a small portion of that. And I had to bring in my plumber's receipts and a bunch of other stuff, and so I just want to put in your guys' ear. That, you know, some of these people, and they're going to be probably in the lowest hit communities because. They're in trailers and they're in homes that aren't insulated and and they can't afford this, and so. I just want to put that into your ear that that we need to take into consideration the water bills as well. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for reminding us of what. We all know and but we forget to share to our new members and yes, that is definitely. I have not put that on the agenda yet because. We just don't know the impact. Yeah, I guess I should have included that in the heading of this one just as well. Not only do we have to consider the winter averaging, but. You know, gosh, what's it going to do to an individual bill? You know, you've seen on television or in the, in the news. Electricity. There are some people that their electric bill is going to be. Through the roof. Luckily. We're in a co-op and from everything I've seen, our PEC has said that. They're not going to be charging us exorbitant rates, but. That's to be seen, but yes, that is definitely something we will be considering next month as well, Darcy. Thank you. Yes, Counsel Marion.
Just wanted to, to echo exactly what uh, Ms. DeVoe just said because I think that's, that's the point. You know, maybe to look at whether the, using the three months or using two months is going to be of some sort of cost savings to citizens. And if we can provide some sort of relief to citizens who right now might need to put money elsewhere to fix things in their home or other damage or things that may have happened as a result of this, then I think we should at least um, consider it.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So um, our existing code ordinances addresses uh, leak adjustments. Section thirteen point one zero one two uh, provides options for a city manager to review and make adjustments in these circumstances when um, the customer can provide proof of the issue. And then also there is an, another option for an administrative adjustment by staff uh, that I think is exercised in a very limited manner. So I, I would anticipate that um, Mr. Chan might be a little busy or his designees might be a little busy looking at uh, potential leak adjustment uh, options and information in accordance with that particular section from our customers who may have experienced um, excessive uh, water usage because of a leak due to this weather event.
Right. Yeah, um, I was going to put it out there just because normally we'd get one or two, maybe a hand, maybe three or four, you know, in a month, somebody that's identified a leak. But I, I'm expecting quite a bit more for the month of February. So I, you know, I don't know if this is something we still want to address on an individual basis or I don't know, we just, we'll, we'll have to see once the readings are done. And I want to clarify, I got some information, uh, readings. We aren't reading until tomorrow and Monday, so the February readings will be done Friday and Monday. All readings will not be into the system until sometime next week. And then Councilor Sullivan, you're correct in that it's the May bill. Right, anyone else? All right. It's open for action. Or further discussion. All right, if I have no action, then I will move on. To number five. Discussion, consideration and possible action on resolution number twenty one dash eighteen seventy eight. A resolution ratifying and continuing the disaster declaration signed by the mayor on February seventeenth twenty twenty one and establishing an effective date. Uh, there's a little note in the bottom of the actual uh, agenda. Um, because this was not originally put on the agenda the other day. But because it is expiring and it, in order for us to, to be continued, it takes council consideration. And so this is being put in, put on as an emergency. Um, and the reason for that is it's, it's funding. If we do not continue with our disaster declaration, we can't, we, as of the expiration of that declaration, we won't be able to seek funding for any other expenses due to the emergency. So this is strictly a request for continuation so that we can apply to FEMA for all the, all the monies that this is going to cost us. Yeah. So that's it in a nutshell. Questions, comments? All right, anybody from the audience have a question or comment on the declaration? Yes, Ms. Jean-Jopein. You are muted. Can't hear you. There you are.
Yeah, I'm back, I'm back. I would just recommend that, uh, it's my thoughts that um, I hope that uh, our council uh, just makes a recommendation to uh, approve the extension so we can uh, uh, have more time to help take care of uh, all of our people.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Durbin.
Uh, yeah, I, the only thing I, you had said that you're trying to establish an effective date. And when you say that, I assume you mean you're trying to establish the first day that the emergency went into effect. Is that correct?
No, we've already got the effective date uh, when we, when I declared that the disaster declaration. Uh, I'm just trying to keep it going, not.
Okay, so you're, you're not, you're not trying to determine an effective date? You, it's, it's effective when you first declared it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. I didn't know whether you had to add a, uh, an initial timeline as to when the disaster may have started.
Yeah.
And I was going to suggest to, and make sure you include the, the ice storm the week before.
Right. Yeah, we've got, we've got uh, the declaration already, but I, it's only good for seven days. So for to go beyond here, I got to get council approval, so. Thank you. Yes, Councilor Marion.
Uh, Mayor, would the, the extension be for another seven days? And then i- if we need it longer than that, we would have to extend it again, or, or would this one be for a longer period of time?
This one is until we, until we rescind it or until we close it or, isn't it? Am I wrong there?
Written until you can add a date in, if you look at the bottom of the resolution, Mr., Mr. Mayor. Uh, you can add a date in or, or depending on the vote, you can have it effective until it's rescinded. I left it avail- that option available to you. So uh, whoever makes your motion, assuming it's a motion to approve it, would need to make that clarifying point. Some cities have extended it, for example, for thirty days. Uh, some have extended it indefinitely. Others have extended it for shorter periods of time. So that's something that I uh, would encourage you to discuss and make a determination on this evening.
All right. And just for an example, our uh, COVID is until rescinded, so it is still ongoing for COVID. So whatever, whatever y'all think. I mean, I, I, hopefully we're not going to have a tremendous amount more of expenses, but um, there's probably still so a few things out there that we don't, we haven't identified yet, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I, I do anticipate that the repairs to Loman Ford that were caught, that were needed now because of the ice storm may take some time. And the full collection of the brush and the recovery, the, the mulching and the burning of that brush and the time and labor to do that may take us uh, past a thirty day window. And so I would recommend to you that uh, you have it at, at least thirty days at a minimum. Um, indefinite or until rescinded, it uh, might be a safer choice. And that way you can make a determination. Once you know uh, all of the um, recovery efforts are complete, then we just need to make sure to come back and have it rescinded.
Yes, Councilor Sullivan.
I'll just voice that I'm certainly in favor of doing it until we rescind it.
Councilor Williams.
There's, there's no penalty in leaving it open until we rescind it, is there? I mean, what's the point of putting a time back on it if we could just leave it open until we know for sure? I'm just asking.
Yes, that's correct, Councilor Williams. There is no penalty for leaving it open until rescinded. Um.
Okay. Thank you.
There's such, some cities just don't, they don't like to leave things open ended, so it just depends, you know, depends on your council. Councilor Davila.
Yeah, I would go along with what uh, Ms. Silvera just said, let's just leave it um, until it's rescinded because we have to put something in, in there to uh, specify what we're asking for. If we just leave it open, like you said, in seven days, it will be null and void.
Councilor Marion, did you have something to add?
Really, it's a, a, a question, uh, Mayor. So there are some reports, uh, and feel free to correct me if I, if I have this wrong, but that there could be another storm um, in, in March sometime. Um, if, if we should uh, uh, you know, be so unlucky to be hit with another storm, would this same, or could this same disaster declaration cover that? Should there be a need or would you have to issue another?
I'm going to defer to Aaron on that, but in my, my thinking, I would say it would be another one. Because you can't, you know, if you're in Florida and you get hit by three hurricanes, I think you have to have a different declaration for each hurricane.
That'll seem to make the most sense to leave it indefinite, but yeah.
All right, anybody else? Yes, Councilor Prince.
Um, just a, just a sort of a process and control question. As we, as we extend this or leave it open or stay in the state of, of emergency, our processes are different, I assume, in making decisions. Are there any controls that we're, are not in place around, I don't know, uh, contracts or spending that uh, sh- that could be of concern to citizens that we should get out on the table?
I'm not sure I under- quite understand.
Well, I mean, normally in order to sign contracts or to spend money, it comes through the council public forum. Are we in, in the state we're in now, is, is there any, should citizens have any concern that there could be money spent or contracts entered into that is not publicly, uh, you know, available for their knowledge? That's the only, I just, I'm, I'm not saying there is something. I'm just saying that I can imagine citizens having that question as we extend this. Uh, you know, what's, what's the downside, if you will, of staying in this state of uh, emergency?
Uh, it does suspend certain things, but um, I'll let Aaron address it a little more specifically.
Sure. For example, we are going out, we are not avoiding the um, public bidding process for uh, some of our recovery efforts. For example, um, I believe Mr. Malley put out for uh, public bids some of the work that is needed uh, for collection of brush on the roadways. So he's in the process of doing that. We're not avoiding that process because of this particular situation, even though there are some, um, some rules and regulations that are uh, suspended uh, during a disaster. Um, I, I don't anticipate that we are going to, to, that there would be a financial aspect that we would not uh, follow under the public bidding laws. Um, if it's, if it's fifty K or if it's a contract that we anticipate would go, um, you know, something would be purchased in a single uh, process that would require us to go through the public bidding uh, requirements. We're going to do that. Um, and you're actually going to see some of those, uh, the results of some of that that we've already gotten started here uh, at the next or the following um, council meeting. Um, because we've already had to start that um, to get the recovery process going.
Yeah, um, I don't. And yes, I, I you can never say never. Like, I'll give you an example, the restrooms and showers that are here at City Hall. I, I had requested those starting uh, Thursday, I guess, through uh, the web E O C uh, process. And county didn't have them. It went all the way to the state level. And the state was able to find them. Uh, the, the, the restrooms were local, but the showers came all the way from Hattiesburg, Mississippi. Uh, yeah, they drove all night, got here at midnight, dropped it. And then we, on Monday, we met them six AM Tuesday morning to get those things set up. Um, but yeah, the decision had been made at, at our level on Saturday, Sunday, that if the state, I mean, we literally gave them till Sunday afternoon, that if the state could not come up with it, we were going to try and reach out on our own. And that would have been an ex- an expense that I would have authorized. Uh, just because I felt that the need for those things were great enough, knowing that the island was down. Uh, Mud Ten at Waterford was down. Uh, people in Cherry Hollow are completely without water. And I had no idea who out in the county on Wellwater, you know, was down. Um, and I, I had heard on the, on the radio that they had said as many as a thousand residents in the Sandy Creek. I'm sorry, not Cherry Holly's, Cherry Hollow Sandy Creek subdivision. As many as a thousand residents were still without water. So, you know, I felt that expense warranted an emergency expense, but the other stuff like the repairs and at this point, they are not an emergency. So uh, we would follow the normal procurement processes. Yes, Ms. DeVoe.
Did you open up for public comment? I don't know if that happened yet.
Yes, and you're the third one, so go ahead.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear somebody else out there. Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, well, I just had a couple of questions. So, um, when Eric uh, put out the thing to get bids, did that go out into a local forum? So all our great haulers out here who have been busting butt since this start, oops, start, started would have a chance to bid to help the city because I know there's a lot of great haulers out here. And then my second question is, when you have this emergency declaration, does that put you in for FEMA money or the state money that the federal government has just given to the state? Because I know there's FEMA money that will help you with emergency situations like the plant going out and some other things that you can declare. And you could even, I believe you can even uh, get all your volunteers, um, some type of cash back if I'm not wrong. And um, so then that's one of the things. And then also, when is FEMA going to come here? Because that has been like a off, on, off, on. And, and I know there's, there's still quite a few people with no water, like you said, with no facilities. And to, to be filing for um, their insurances, some of these are actually in rentals. So a lot of these people could be in some serious trouble out here, maybe even homeless. So I just want to see how this money pans out to the citizens or does this all stay in the local government and all the money comes to you guys and you pay for all the stuff that's broken? That's all. Thank you.
All right, so the bidding will go out to any and everybody that who, you know, it's blasted everywhere. So the local haulers can bid just as well as anybody else. Uh, when it comes to FEMA, there is a little bit of all of that. Uh, there are certain things that we can apply for directly that we can get reimbursed for. Um, we have uh, Sergeant Major Schofield is working on our, what they call a disaster summary outline or D S O. Um, those are things that we can apply for directly. But there is also um, things that we can apply for through the county that'll go through the, the Travis County E O C and the Texas Department of Emergency Management that way, like the trailers, restrooms. Uh, those are all falling under those categories. Uh, you know, so we're not out any money. Now, whether this county didn't have it, so it went to the state level. So the state will obviously be requesting FEMA dollars to, you know, to recover that. Um, and that's all to be seen, you know, uh, we don't know how much uh, the president's going to authorize for those funds. And then the third part of that is um, the residents themselves. We have posted on our website, the actual FEMA. the residents themselves. We have posted on our website the actual FEMA application web address for them to start the FEMA application and, and get started on that, so they can get their, you know, FEMA P A dollars. Whether FEMA comes out here or not, it's hard to say. They might, but you know, they're, I guess it would depend on the volume of applications that they have to process. And my thing would, my guess would be they would come to Travis County, and then we would go to wherever they are in the county. The odds of them actually coming to La Gavista, probably not great. Last time, we had the flood. You know, obviously, total devastation was not as large, but we may have had just as many individual households, depending on how many water lines we've got broke, broken compared to the number of houses that were flooded. FEMA did not come out here during the flood. Red Cross did show up three weeks after the event, I believe, but we did not see FEMA, and I, I would think if they come, it's going to be at the county level to help process.
Thank you. And, and the president will actually be in Texas tomorrow, if nobody knows that. President is coming tomorrow to Texas.
I thought Trump was busy. Oh, did I say?
Yeah, well, there you go there. You gotta go to Florida to see him down there.
I just couldn't resist. I just couldn't. Yes, Ms. Jean-Jopein.
I was just going to follow up, following up with Darcy and the points that she made, which were super, is that, it's all, all that is all the more reason why we should leave the date open, as I think most everybody has agreed so far. Leave it open, because you never know when additional monies might come available, or they might shift allocations and leave, have additional opportunities as things are discovered and things are approved, so.
Yeah.
Ms. Mayor?
I, yes, Ms. Silveira.
I just wanted to make one point of clarification, because Darcy brought up a good point about the brush collection. There was an informal request for bids on that one, because the dollar amount is expected to be below the public bidding options. We did reach out to multiple, Eric did reach out to multiple contractors, because there's kind of a three-area plan, and he wanted to give multiple contractors an option to cover it, so that we can kind of have them out at the same time. And, and so we have multiple contractors who've contacted us. I believe one of them, at least one of them's local. But the repairs to Lowman are gonna be much more expensive, and that's gonna have to go through the public bidding process, because the original project that had been planned, as far as the type of resurfacing that our guys had previously prepped for, is now going to have to be a little different. We'll talk about that in more detail at a future council meeting. But I didn't want you to think that we put out an official RFP process for the brush removal. We will have to do that for the repairs to Lowman.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, that's everything. It's open for action. Yes. Counselor Sullivan.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty-one dash eighteen seventy-eight and leave the date open, the declaration open until we rescind it.
Second.
All right, I have the motion and a second, but Counselor Williams, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Hearing none, resolution passes unanimous. And we are at the most exciting part of every council meeting. And that is the last item. Consider schedule and items for future council meetings. Ms. Silveira's already stolen my thunder, and that I don't know that we can have it for the March fourth meeting, since, well, no, it's already, yeah. Pretty much consider the agenda for March fourth set, unless you just have something absolutely that has to get on there, because Sandra has already put out the draft today. So unless you just, there's something absolutely that we missed, consider it set. So we're looking March eighteenth and beyond. Indefinitely, our CIP, our, you know, with Lowman Ford and other repairs that we're, we're, we're going to have to look at our budget in our projects. Things may have to go, may have to be adjusted. You know, with what we're declaring with our DSO, reimbursement, things like that, it's, we need to look at everything we got out there. And there might be some things that get cut or get delayed or something. But we definitely need to, if the eighteenth, if we have time, I know poor Eric, his guys have been going nonstop since the eleventh. You know, the police department, I know there was guys that were spending dispatchers at times where they're six, six days, and maybe one of them might even been there longer than six days. You know, not just coming to an end, but there's work still going on, and I don't know that we can have it a good summary by the eighteenth or not, but yeah, we definitely need to look at that, and so I want that one out there. Anybody else? Yes, Counselor Prince.
Going back to the earlier discussion, it may be a good idea to add an agenda item, which I would call the water bill relief process. So, you know, our, as, as Ms. Silveira pointed out, we do have an ordinance that handles that, but I think we should consider creating a process to handle a very large influx of water relief applicants.
Right. And of course, we're bringing back number four, the winter averaging. That'll be coming back. Yes, Counselor Marion.
Mayor, I've had a few citizens reach out about the possibility of the city discussing perhaps an ordinance related to animal cruelty, and wondered if that might be something that we could put on as a discussion item. Obviously, not for the fourth, but perhaps after that.
Sure. Hopefully, we don't have any of that going on in our but as you can never say never, right? But yeah. Anybody else? All right. Well, if that is it, I appreciate all of you joining me for this Thursday night, and I'll see you again next Thursday, if not sooner. And oh, please, if there's anybody out there, I mean, we had so many people reach out between our churches and our women's club and La Gavista Cares, and I know we've got people reaching out there, but there's always, there always seems to be somebody that we, we miss. Good example, today is Thursday. I just found out today that there was a woman in the overlooks that was still without water and, and needed a shower and, and had come last night to take a shower. And up until yesterday, we hadn't identified anybody in the overlooks as being in, in need, so as y'all are out there in the community and talking to people and friends, you know, anybody that we can identify, and even, even if they're outside of the city limits, you know, let us know. We have people coming from all over the northwest Travis County area to use our, our stuff, and we want to make sure we, we get that out there. And they're taken care of. I have requested this, the showers and restrooms be picked up on Monday. So I don't know that they'll be gone on Monday, but that has been my request to the state, so we know they're here at least through Sunday. And otherwise, thank y'all very much, and we'll see y'all later. And I will call the meeting adjourned at seven fifty-eight PM.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Good night.